Good evening and welcome to the Fort Clinton City Council Regular Meeting of September 27th, 2016. Please stand and join me in inviting the flag of allegiance for the words of our president, Mr. President, and for our military veterans. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. You must stay out of the good and you must not trespass against us. And neither sinners can attempt to challenge us with their worship. Our enemies, kings and queens, shall not overcome our sinners. Thank you. Will the first please call to all? Dave Bealow?
Present.
Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Beth Gilman?
Present.
Jerry Trowley?
Present.
Roseanne Hickman?
Present.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Joel Freeman?
Present.
Counsel before you, you have the September 13th, 2016 Regular Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
So moved, Madam President.
Mr. Bealow, thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Trowley, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes stand approved as written. The Chair notes that certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. This evening we have no guest presentation, so we will now move to public comment.
Debbie Croft, 120 Adam Street, Fort Clinton.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
I am wondering if anything is being done about all the empty buildings, especially the City Hall Building and downtown. I've been talking to several of the business owners downtown and one of them came up with an idea that if a building is not on the market for sale right now, that maybe you give them a certain amount of time to fix up their building if it needs fixing up, to rent, say give them six months or nine months, and if nothing has happened after that time, you start fining them and you put it on their tax bill. And the City Hall Building is falling apart to the point where I'm afraid it's almost going to be totally impossible to fix up. I personally call Steve Coon Restoration. They finally boarded up the old museum door because anybody could get in there. A month ago, all the lights were left on for like a week inside of there. There's still glass falling out. There are trees almost as tall as the roof, and I'm wondering if the city has any jurisdiction to go over there and trim all that garbage tree and stuff down and bill them for it. Somebody evidently had sprayed some weed killer and it's helping, but it's just an eyesore in our community, you know, and it doesn't look good, just like the Emporium Building downtown. That's been empty for probably 10 years now, and supposedly the man that owns it lives in Florida and he wants to rent it. But Matt Ritter has all his painting equipment in there, and there's been people wanting to rent it, and Matt won't show it because he doesn't want to have to move all his painting equipment. This came from more than one downtown business person. I don't want to name names, but I think there might be some remedies for the community to get the downtown stores filled up, all the empty ones. It's just, it's unsightly and it's not good for downtown or the community. I'm sure you all agree, you don't want all those buildings left empty forever. I mean, that one car wash on Buckeye Boulevard, that thing sat there for at least 20, 25 years. Nothing happened to it, just fallen apart. There ought to be something the city can do to spur these owners to get with it and help make our community look better, especially the downtown area. That's all I have to say, just some food for thought. Hopefully-
Madam President?
Mr. Bealow?
Mrs. Croft, I completely agree with you, and constantly having a look at the vacancies, especially in the downtown, not just on Buckeye Boulevard, but especially downtown, is incredibly, incredibly frustrating to me, and I know to members of the Planning and Development Committee. So, in many ways, I feel like council's hands are tied in the short term. Obviously, we can improve ordinances, the advice of Leo and Council on what's permissible. Planning and development has pursued different economic development opportunities to provide financial incentives. The community reinvestment area is something that's established downtown. We're waiting for the application to be approved by the State of Ohio, which is the next necessary step. That'll remove the burden of increased property taxes. There'll be an abatement on the approved property value, so that's an incentive that hasn't been there before. It's something that's long overdue. The State of Ohio passed downtown redevelopment districts and innovation districts just recently, so that's something I'd want the committee to look at. Again, this is just financial incentives, but you have to be able to go after or pursue with some type of teeth, and they rely on the zoning inspector to do that, and the administration to do that, the Architectural Review Board to do that, on notable buildings downtown. The old Cindy's Building on the corner gives me heartburn every time I drive past it, and worse, the old Dean's Building with the plywood exposed, just like the plywood exposed on the Gars' Building, the old Cindy's Building, gives me a headache every time I look at it. There are places downtown, like the Porridge Room, which is doing a great job. When you drive by it, that looks like a destination, it looks like someplace you'd want it to be, you want others to follow.
Right.
And I know Mrs. Hickman's a downtown business owner, and she does a good job, Mr. Wilber does a good job in front of his place.
I'm talking just about the empty buildings.
I completely agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, the empty buildings. As far as the building on Madison and Second, Gars' Building, evidently he wants to live there, and he's going in at night after dark and working in the building at midnight and 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning. His next-door neighbor hears him pounding up there all the time. So, nailing, Randy told me that. I don't know if he's trying to go around building inspections, trying to pull a good one on somebody, but that building was just horrible. Do you know if anything's being done about the old City Hall Building? I mean, is anybody in Fort Clinton calling them and trying to put some pressure on them to either list it or get on and fix it up? I don't know. Kent's not here, so I don't know if you guys are not-
I'll just reiterate, properties that look dilapidated, that might be against zoning codes and Architectural Review Board within the jurisdiction of downtown falls within the office of the zoning inspector. And I know members of council send emails to the mayor, Mr. Colson, Chief Johnson about these buried things fairly regularly. And anything that any committee in council can do to improve the ability to raise up vacancy downtown, vacant buildings downtown, I'm sure everyone is happy to do that.
If there's a way you can tax them though, you know, like I said, give them six months or nine months or even a year to fix their buildings up and get them rented, or else tell them they're going to start getting fined for it.
Well, and then the complaint that we hear back is, "Well, I don't have money to improve my building anyway," and they're not taxing it.
Then they should list it and sell it. If you can't afford a building down there, put it on the market. Let somebody buy it if they can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vincent Leon, 324 West Second Street, Fort Clinton.
I wanted to address council, and I have some documentation that I have gone through the process of public records request through the city to get these records. And I wanted to go through exactly what I've given you, so we have been understanding what my concerns are. These are issues that have been talked about during the years, so much so that actually back in the day, Debbie Heimerdinger was the mayor, and had been formed with Floyd Brown in environmental studies that was her part. After being a council and being mayor in the city of Fort Clinton, I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time reading those documents and going through them and realizing that there are always some things that still need to be addressed. It's fortunate enough for my side to work with county commissioners, also Jamie Byer Grant to secure funds to move forward with more environmental studies on this property. I know this property has been a topic of conversation for many years. I'm glad to see that Mr. Norther is here in the audience, because I'm sure we would like to hear some of this information as well. I'm sure you're here, Mr. Porter, man. One of the things I gave you right at the top, you'll see that there is a map. Did you get the map? You're wearing this on. I'm also going to give you this, Mr. Norther, since you've always questioned it and waited for this information for a long time. It'd be very helpful for you to understand what's going on as well. If I could, first of all, the map. Back November 12th at 12:30, there was a meeting between myself, I'm still acting mayor, I also brought in the new mayor, Hugh Wheeler, Tracy Colson, and I believe Mr. Hadfield was in that meeting with Ann Wingard. At that time, she handed that map that you had before you. This is the first time that we had any real inclination of exactly what was going on and where the issues were. If you notice on the map, you'll see some circled areas in red, they also have a X on them. That X indicates areas that need to be remedied. One of the areas, I mean, I just said they're all of large concern, one of the areas should really stick out to you is the one right directly involving the playground, where our children and our visitors play. These are all places where we were told needed to be remediated. At that given time, I'd just say I had lost the election, and Mr. Wheeler, it was very important for him to be part of that meeting, which is why I called him up, made sure he was there, made sure Tracy Colson was there as well, so everyone knew what was going on, so they could continue to move forward. As you go through the documents, you'll see I also, before I had left office, I had filed a purchase order. That purchase order was to continue with the soil samples that needed to be done, testing groundwater and remediation, along with an NFA letter. The NFA letter is a letter that goes to the Ohio EPA. In that letter, it would talk about three different things. It would talk about a VAP, which is a voluntary action plan, which, to put it very simply, basically, we know we have issues, we have identified the issues, we have the information we need to know exactly where those areas are, and the specifications set forth by Ohio EPA on how to clean it up is something that we would have to deal with, but as they evolve and they change the rules like they do, we would only have to apply to those certain rules at that given time. Another issue part of that NFA letter was to talk about was the Rule 13. Rule 13 with Ohio EPA basically talks about how to handle that soil, a lot of which meant for, to put it in layman terms, if you, basically, if you dig any soil up, it must be handled properly and disposed of off-site properly. There also was, in the F A letter was to be discussed, about a covenant not to sue. Reason being that we did not want anyone from the past coming back to the city and suing the city because now they have cancer. This is things that needed to be taken care of to safeguard our community, the welfare of our city, and the people. And also remediation. At that meeting, back on November 12th, we were instructed of those areas, as I pointed out, we were told that those areas needed to be dug down two foot, the material needed to be removed, and in that circumference, and I apologize, I can't remember all the numbers off the top of my head, but that dirt needed to be removed from site and new soil brought in to make that property safe for our community, for our children, for our visitors. It has been 10 months now. There's been no action taken. I'm assuming by the look of some of your folks' faces and the way you're looking at those documents, I'm assuming you're not aware of this, this is the first you've heard of it. During that meeting back in November, the discussion was that we wanted to get all this information and we wanted to bring it to council, due to the fact that there was a new mayor at the time, I wanted to make sure that he was handling it, because it was going to be a continued process that needed to continue on.
Mayor Leon, or former Mayor, excuse me.
That's okay.
Mr. Leon, you're about six minutes into it, if you could just hit the shot, please. Mr. Bealow?
I think this is important, and it's a conversation, and it's not heated like last meeting, some of our guests. If we waive the five-minute rule and grant Mr. Leon ten times-
I have a second, Ed. Do you have some- All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you talk about the residential versus the commercial aspect of that, please?
I can. The property, from my understanding, I'm going by the information I was given by Ann Wingard, she works for SME. SME is a company, and I pause this on my notes, what that stands for. Soil and Material Engineers Incorporated. This is what they specialize in. During that meeting, we also talked about the commercial value, we talked about residential value. There are no set exact numbers when it comes to environmental studies, when it comes to park properties. It was assumed that we need to file the residential levels because of the fact of the way the property is being used. Just like your children that play in their backyard, we consider the park to be just the same. If the park was to be developed and used as commercial property, it could be encapsulized, and it would be within the threshold that that could be done. But because it's not being used for that, and it was going to be, the big push from the community was to keep it as a park, obviously, there was a lot of conversation going on with Mike Rose at the time. If you noted, there was never a contract with Mr. Rose, because Mr. Rose could not answer the questions that I needed to be satisfied to even approach council with it. So, even though I know a lot of folks didn't agree with what we were doing and how we were doing it, until we had the proper information, I was not willing to present anything to council, that's why nothing was there. Also, of importance was this, what are we doing with the property, but how are we going to safeguard our community? The covenant not to sue, I know is something that I had mentioned in passing with Mr. Wilber, and how important it was to safeguard our community, you know, and there's potential for the city to get sued. We already, our pockets are obviously empty in the city, and we need to make sure that we're safeguarding the community. So, right away, we assume we've followed the residential guidelines. And I know, Mr. Colson, you and I had discussions about that, and we agreed it was probably the best approach since it was being utilized as a park and on top of that playground equipment. Pretty scary. I would hope, you know, this is one of those things, I know there's been some language in a certain newspaper in our area, mayor-on-mayor harassment, why am I pulling public records? I'm not one to follow social media, I'm not one to read the news in a newspaper, I want to find out fact. This is why I do public records requests, it's a privilege that we all have, and I encourage anyone to do the same instead of reading from Facebook or from the Sandusky Register, but get your facts straight so that we can have these kind of conversations very intelligent, show the different issues that are going on. I would hope and pray that this council would see it fit tonight to make a motion to direct the administration to move forward with getting Ann Wingard in here to explain everything, top to bottom, and to move forward with the remediation of that park so that it can be safe again for everyone.
Madam President, Mr. Freeman? May I respond? I was here when Ann Wingard did the presentation for everyone.
During-
During a council meeting.
Okay.
So, my question is, because she went over the different levels and the different samples that she took, and that there was a difference between, yes, residential, commercial, and the levels were okay, because residential considers you having to be living there 24/7 or in that vicinity. The small exposure time to the levels of what's on the playground, in her words, were, they were acceptable because you weren't living there, they weren't the guidelines followed by the residential, commercial. And I'll double-check that-
That's fine, because I do recall-
Because that's what I thought she had said.
Some of that conversation. If I could cause your attention to the map, you'll see there's a date stamp on it, and if you also noted some of the areas, there was more drilling and more testing done at a later date, and it took place after that meeting. That's why it was imperative to have that meeting with the new mayor, with Tracy Colson, to discuss those issues, at which time we did talk about remediation did need to be done. So, I will agree with what your statements are, Mr. Freeman. I believe you are absolutely correct, it was conversations somewhat in that light, but obviously, things have changed. They did change on that date. Remediation was talked about, we talked about where we're getting the money from. Obviously, Mr. Hadfield is always concerned about how we can do it, what is the cost involved in that, can we do it ourselves in the city, are we equipped to handle that? It was discussed that maybe we potentially were not. We talked about using soil that was already compiled here by City Hall from dig jobs on, during the Second and Third Street projects. We were assured that it was very important to have that soil tested because of where it came from and the potential for contamination in that soil as well. So, a lot of things did happen after that, that, you know, maybe this will help, but this is why I am strongly suggesting the council to bring Ann Wingard in here. I would assume that the report is done, I would assume that it's ready to be presented now unto you, but also hereto to the citizens. That's why I gave you those other documents, you can see there is a invoice or statement outlines the different things that have been done. It also talks about the different soil samples and dates, talks about the prices, and then lo and behold, you'll also see an invoice, and you'll see a canceled check by the city. You'll also see a canceled check paid for the NFA letter. Mr. Hadfield, I know it kind of got thrown on your lap, I requested as a public request, an NFA letter, I have not seen it, it's been well over a month.
As far as what I've been able to research, we don't have the NFA letter.
So, we've paid for it, but obviously, we never received it, and we've never received the final report.
I have never seen the final report. I remember when Mr. Freeman had said that-
Yeah, right.
First conversation then was, if it's standard residential, there was nothing really to remediate at all. If it was commercial, that's where we were going, you and I had those meetings with Ann. I know the mayor has been, Wheeler has been in contact with Ann about any of this stuff that's gone up there, we talked about the lighthouse and those kind of things, there was absolutely no issues at all with EPA with any of that stuff that they did. So, we did do the proper channels to make those outcomes. Where it stands, I did not personally lately talk to Ann that remediation, Mayor Wheeler, but from what I understand, it's similar to a joke, if we're going to do something commercial-wise, absolutely right, we have to take all that stuff out and do it. And I think you had that conversation, I believe, with Mayor Wheeler on that also. If it was going to stay residential, you were under the impression, as I was, that you did not have to do anything, you were fine with doing that.
And from my perspective, I've still been waiting for, if we did move forward with remediation, I'd still give a price code in order to incorporate it into the budget of that purpose.
I apologize, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I was just talking about that, if we did decide to move forward with remediation, I would need to have some sort of price code in order to incorporate it into the budget of that purpose.
Well, you know, obviously, it's important to have those carryovers and you have those, for those emergency issues. Like I said, I would hope the council would finances and emergency protect the people you represent. You know, this is something that we've been working on, things we've been looking at, it's time to quit looking. I know, having those conversations, the commercial aspect of it and the levels to which it's acceptable, it's more acceptable because it can be capsulized, which means basically the concrete can be poured over and it's sealed out. But when it comes to residential area, using it as a park, you're in the dirt, you're playing baseball, whatever the case may be, you have issues. You talked about the lighthouse. I know I was accused of trying to stop the lighthouse, that wasn't the issue. The issue was, is that there was an electric line being dug in the ground when it was supposed to be following Rule 13, which states you must remove that soil if you dig it up. Instead, we had city workers pushing the dirt back into the hole. Now, we're risking the lives of our city workers along with all the residential, excuse me.
That was clear with EPA, he made me call EPA, and Ann Wingard on that, and we were fine with that.
Well, you know, I appreciate what you've been told, Mr. Colson. My dealings with the Ohio EPA is they never do anything per a phone call, it's in writing. That's why I requested a copy through the public records request, a copy of any applications filed. The only thing I had received was an application for the actual foundation for the lighthouse, which is fine. Where's the one for digging the channel for the electrical? And where's the response to that telling you that you need to take that dirt and remove it? Those are the issues that we need to be concerned about, especially when we went through the process of doing environmental studies, and we have issues there. That's what part of the NFA letter was for. And I appreciate, Mr. Colson, I'm not trying to pin this on you in any way, shape, or form, you can only know what you know, what you're getting, but I think it's something that we need to address, and that's what I'm asking for. I'll point fingers, I'm just asking that, please, move forward, make a motion tonight to get Ann Wingard in here and move forward with remediation so that it can be safe for everyone. Any questions? If you have any questions concerning that paperwork, please over to the table.
The only follow-up I have is, I deal with the EPA a lot in my line of work, and if there's no permit that you have to file from the EPA, there's nothing you'll get in writing. Prime example, I do a lot of chemical spraying. You have to have a certain amount of chemical spray before you hit an NOI with the EPA. That's the notice of intent, you have to let them know everything you're doing, temperatures, chemical mixture, the works, and they will come out and watch you mix. But as much as I know with the EPA, they have never required any kind of, for running a trench line, required any kind of cleanup.
During that Rule 13, you have to file an application, the whole property was deemed under Rule 13. And that's why they moved forward with filing that application.
Yeah, and I'll definitely look at it.
So, that's all I ask, take a look, please. It's something I think that's worthy of looking into. Obviously, those studies were done for a reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the information.
Madam President?
Mr. Bealow?
Mr. Leon, thank you. We'll take this, we have a finance committee meeting, it's rescheduled for Thursday, and the topic you were just discussing would be the agenda.
Thank you.
Larry Holman, 419 West Sixth Street.
Speaking as Tree Commissioner, the Tree Commission would like to thank Councilwoman Margaret Phillips and her Laws, Rules, and Ordinances Committee for the drafting and implementation of the amendment to the tree ordinance. Thank you, Margaret. Speaking as a citizen, is the city aware of the lights at Becker Park for the flags? It's not working. Is the city aware, the lights for the flag at Waterworks Park by the waterfall, it's not working? Is it still sharp?
It is still sharp.
The in-ground lights are still out that we talked about. One other issue, Tracy, those downed trees by the water and the walkway out by Waterworks Park, we got to clean up, what, the 15th?
Uh, the 15th.
Think we can get those cut up and put in the boxes? The ones that are already down, and we have one bad one, what I'm saying is between Waterworks and the beach, the wall along the lake, you can't touch those trees. What about the ones that are down? Real. Mr. President, thank you for the floor.
Madam President?
Mr. Bealow?
Mr. Holman, last time you were concerned about medical marijuana, and we're going to be discussing that at the next Planning and Development Committee meeting, which will be next Tuesday, October 4th. I know you're concerned about retail establishments and growers and factories not popping up next to St. John Church or the high school. Just after a quick look at what the state Legislative Services Commission, their analysis of what the bill was, the medical marijuana bill, that it prohibits any of those types of establishments, growers, processors, or retailers, less than at least 500 feet from school, public park, church, anything like that. So, that's good, I guess, and obviously, the city council is allowed to limit the number of dispensaries in the city, so we'll just make sure you have one about that.
Land House 4523?
Yes, yes, so we'll be discussing that next week, that's just a little early, so sneak preview, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bealow. The mayor is not with us this evening, we'll go to the audit report.
Thank you, Madam President. Briefly, unfortunately for you, both items on the agenda tonight deal with the financial aspect and financial dealings of the- financial aspect and financial dealings of the city of Portland. For its third reading tonight is Resolution 16-6. This is a resolution that we do on a yearly basis that is asked for passage by the Ottawa County Budget Commission. Basically, the purpose of this resolution is to accept and acknowledge the amount of property tax revenues that the city is eligible for for the 2017 fiscal year, specifically for the general fund and the fire fund. If we're familiar to pass that, means that we do not recognize those amounts, and it could cause a delay in tax revenue that the city pays here. In addition, for its new, first reading is Ordinance 23-16, which is the ordinance amending appropriations that was passed earlier this year. Real briefly, there's no need to pass this tonight, however, I just wanted to touch base on it, this adds appropriations for Lake Shore's Drive Sidewalk project that was funded by ODA. It also does increase to fire insurance claims fund due to insurance claims that the city is holding that will be paid out relatively soon. And it also deals with the water and sewer Madison Street project, the appropriations needed and received by the OWPA to continue on, such that it can be a brief explanation of those two places. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. And now move to the treasurer's report, Mrs. Hanson is not with us this evening, we'll go to the Water Works.
No, please, just that.
Safety Service Director's report.
Thank you, Madam President. You've probably heard the rumors that the bridge may not, project may not go this year. You'll know Friday if it's going to go or not, so ODA will let people know on Friday if the bridge is going to be closed or not. Atkins is in town tomorrow, they'll be uptown doing some sewer locations downtown, should not disrupt the traffic too much, watch out for the trucks that are down there, though, please. Spear Brothers, which I announced last time, will be in town October 3rd approximately, starting at the intersection of Second and Madison, that will be closed for one week, that intersection both ways, you can't get through, then they will move south by the half-block to move forward from there. Cemetery cleanup is October 1st, legal items can go back on October 8th. Citywide cleanup is October 15th, a Saturday, we put the dumpsters up in Waterworks, Port Clinton residents only. If anybody needs assistance, there's people in Kowala's group, I believe, is going to come and help to haul stuff away. If there's some elderly people that have stuff that needs to be thrown away, please give a call to City Hall, we'll put you on the list, and somebody will come by and give you a hand to help you get rid of that stuff. We have one more brush pickup coming up, it'll be October the 11th, because the 10th is a holiday, we won't work, so it'll start on Tuesday instead of Monday. So that'll be the last one, and we'll switch over to the leaf pickup from there. Leaf pickup will begin, as I tell everybody, when the leaves start to come down, a little bit heavier, and we'll go to and we get them all cleaned up. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Coulson. The police chief's report.
Okay, tonight I had the pleasure of attending the Perkins Township trustee meeting, where Detective Sergeant Corbin Carpenter, along with members of the Danbury Police Department, were recognized for their assistance with the murder investigation that happened in Perkins Township last year. The suspect who resided in Danbury Township, who was later located in the city of Port Clinton, recently pled guilty to aggravated murder this year. Secondly, Port Clinton Civil Service Commission recently gave a written examination for a police officer on Saturday, September 10th, 17th, sorry. There were 10 applicants. This Saturday, October 1st, we will be giving the physical agility portion of the test for the six applicants that passed. This test is important because Sergeant Bruce Sloggy will be retiring December 31st of this year after 32 years of service with the city. And lastly, the city beach traffic light will be turned back to flash Saturday, October 1st. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Fire chief is not with us this evening, correspondence. Council, you have the infrastructure meeting minutes from August 2nd and September 6th, 2016, and you also have the Parks and Rec meeting minutes from August 9th, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve the correspondence as stated?
Madam President, I will make a motion to do it. I move to accept those bits.
Ms. Phillips, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Friedman, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes stand, or correspondence stands as stated. We'll now move to the third reading of ordinances and resolutions. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, Resolution 16-6.
Resolution 16-6, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county office.
Council, do you wish to take any action on Resolution 16-6?
Madam President?
Mr. Beal.
Will the council adopt Resolution 16-6?
Have a motion to adopt Resolution 16-6. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Sardi, thank you. All those in favor, no, will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry. Curious discussion, Mr. Beal, anything that you'd like to say?
No. Thank you. Mr. Hadfield captured it all, just being redundant.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Zoe Anhickman?
Yes.
Dr. Trolle?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Dave Beal?
Yes.
Resolution 16-6. Is it possible? We have no second readings, we'll now move to new readings of ordinances and resolutions. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 23-16?
Ordinance 23-16, ordinance amending ordinance number 6-16 of the city of Port Clinton and adjusting accounts within the city of Portland.
Does council wish to take any action on Ordinance 23-16? Being done. Ordinance 23-16 will be moved to its second reading at our next regular council meeting on October 11th, 2016. We will now move to business report. Mrs. Gilman?
Now, please, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Beal?
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning and Development Committee meeting will meet at its regularly scheduled time Tuesday, October 4th at 5:30 here at City Hall. The September meeting could be scheduled, so we'll just move on to October, which is next week, Tuesday, October 4th at 5:30. The agenda will include downtown parking requirements, which the committees looked at, additional community reinvestment areas, CRAs, update on the Riverwalk project, medical marijuana, as I mentioned before, and we'll talk about trees in downtown Portland. I want to congratulate any of the members who are here, but if you are, Rich Norgard and the Portland Lighthouse Conservancy, the project looks great. I remember back when the city was negotiating terms, and I sat down with Mr. Norgard and Coffee Express, and he kind of vented to me, and I just told him where I was coming from, and that we wanted to be responsible in the end. I told him, you know, it's not an icon yet, which is what his argument was, that we should just move forward, and it's on the city seal, all that, and I told him, it's not yet, but it will be when it's up, and I think it definitely is now, it's a great project. Kudos to them. I also want to congratulate Matt Ritter and the Madison's and Frederick Insurance on the, in every vacant building downtown, for sure. The finance committee meeting for September was rescheduled to this Thursday, September 29th at 6:30 here at City Hall. The agenda will include incentives for proposed residential development within the city dispatch, interactive kiosks, and Ordinance 23-16, which is the appropriations ordinance that Mr. Hetham spoke about eloquently earlier. And that's all I have, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Mr. Trolle?
Nothing.
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. And people say there's nothing to do in Port Clinton, they're not looking very hard, especially after last weekend. I was at the harvest festival, homecoming, whatever they're calling it now, the big one at Waterworks Park, I expect it to be bigger next year, I spent four hours taking money for tickets, and while I missed that, I did get a chicken dinner from the cemetery, people who were saving for the cemetery to get on the road, I did, of course, it became supper by the time I got it. And at the lighthouse on Monday, that was just absolutely lovely, well done, it was fun, and it was done correctly because it was done correctly, and I was so pleased with that. And that's all, Madam President.
Thank you. Mrs. Hickman?
I'll be in tonight, Madam President.
Mr. Friedman?
Nothing.
Mrs. Sardi?
Mr. Beal, we would be adding what Mr. Long discussed also to the finances, is that what you should add?
Oh, yeah, I just didn't have it down in my notes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just a clarification on that. The next infrastructure meeting will be October 4th at 6:30, the next Parks and Rec meeting will be October 11th at 6:30. Last night, I attended the Special Olympics softball banquet, along with Chief Hetham and Councilman Hickman, and Amy Hartlaw Camp, too, thanked the city of Port Clinton and Mr. Coulson for always having the field ready whenever they need it, it's a big help. Although they did not have any winning season, they all enjoyed, they all got awards last night, it was, that was really a great thing to go. Also, nice event this weekend for the Portland Homecoming Fest, I also was there selling tickets, and I'd like to thank Main Street Chamber and everybody that helped with Mr. Beal, and Nikki, and Cole, and Tara, and anybody else that helped. And today, I kind of drove around, because I had some extra time, because I've been a little housebound. And I drove down Lake Shore, and the sidewalks look really great, I mean, it's nice, I've gotten a lot of compliments. If you go up to Lakeview Park, they've planted grass, and there's a couple of little sidewalks, which Mr. Coulson said they'll finish the balance in the spring correctly, so you can walk up now, and it connects the new basketball courts. The lighthouse looks nice where it's at. The roads in the cemetery, if you've not been over, the cemetery, they paved, like the third phase now, Mr. Trolle, and which is completing everything. So there's a lot of great things happening in Port Clinton, so just drive around and take a look. Also, I attended with some other council members and administration, Beacon's the best of the best, where we, the city was nominated for the best beach, and the best park for Lakeview Park, the flagship collaborative playground, and the beach came in third, and this year, Lakeview Park, the flagship play place, won, and beat out East Harbor, and East Harbor has won the previous year, so it was pretty exciting. This could not have come to fruition without all the help from the Lions, Kowala's Rotary, Friends of the Park, previous administration, Ability Center, the Red Horse, everyone that donated from the organizations, volunteered, I mean, the list just goes on and on, it's just a great, a great community project, there's people up there all the time, it's just really an exciting thing, so.
Thank you.
Being ordered with this, Madam President, I would like to make, or I would like to move, before I do that, I forgot about the Great Stomp out on the top, but that was going on this weekend, too, and I did not get to the top, and I know there's something like it could fit. I move that this August body be a joke.
Thank you.